Motion to reconvene, open session.
Salute.
And second Eric, and it's seven o'clock. So all in favor of reconvening, raise your hand. Motion carries, seven oh. Okay, we have a couple of recognitions this evening from the primary and the high school. And I think Dr. Isaacson was going to share those with us. Well, I'll read the primary.
Okay.
We have the primary will be recognized as one of the top kids heart challenge schools in the state this year. This has been an area of passion for Erin Haley or Howley or Howley. Since the year 2005, 2006 school year, Erin's first year, the primary school has raised one hundred and eight thousand four hundred seventy-one dollars. Since 2005, our district has raised over two hundred forty thousand dollars for the American Heart Association. One of our biggest fundraising events has been the egg smashing assembly where staff members volunteered to have eggs smashed on their heads. Erin wanted to thank the primary staff and families who were essential to the money raised. And the primary wants to thank Erin for organizing many fundraisers for this cause over the past ten years. So that's, that's a pretty good thing. The American Heart Association is one of my previous fundraisers that I helped out with in the immediate, so that's kind of near and dear to my heart. So I appreciate that. So congratulations on that. Okay, the high school activities, do you have?
Yeah, yeah. Activities department would like to recognize the following. Chris Schott was named the Dream Team Soccer Coach of the Year for 2019. Matt Mitchell was named the Class Three District One Wrestling Coach of the Year and the JCAA Conference Wrestling Coach of the Year for 2019 and 20. Dan Johnson was named the JCA Large School Basketball Coach of the Year for 1920. They have won five consecutive conference championships in the boys' basketball court. Mark Moore Senior was 2019 All-State Boys Soccer. He was JCAA Large School Basketball Player of the Year for 2019-20. Missouri Basketball Coaches Association Academic All-State for 2020. Only 100 were chosen in the entire state and he was the 2020 Post-Dispatch Scholar-Athlete. Garrett Pink was Missouri Basketball Coaches Association Academic All-State. Again, also 100 chosen in the entire state. So our boys' basketball team had two academic all-states, so that's pretty awesome. And as I read that, triggered something in my head, we probably need to invite Mr. Moore to a board meeting because we recognize we're the board medal, our all-state athletes. So we'll get that set up.
Did they do some type of scholar athlete recognition in St. Louis for them? I know.
Yeah, there's a dinner or there was.
I know there was, but I didn't know if that happened this season or if it happened before all this went down.
And then they'll be in the post-dispatch with their picture in there as well.
So it hasn't happened yet.
My knowledge is, I haven't seen their pictures in there yet. Yeah, well, the criteria, I was just gonna, for the end, basketball state was having three, three point five, two point, three point two five and above GPA, an ACT of twenty-seven or higher, or SAT or PSAT, we don't take that as well. So they had two of the 100 students picked. Pretty awesome. Congratulations to all of those.
All right. Next item has to do with the consent agenda. So I need a motion to approve all the items on the consent agenda as presented.
Motion.
Thank you, Rob and Renee. Any discussion on those items that are listed?
Just a question. This is the second read of policies and I have a few questions on the policies. Do you want me to send that to you and ask you if you can deal with them next time around if it ends up anything that you want me to do? Makes some difference.
It's gonna have, however you want to do that. I don't care. Well, isn't the second read a little early? I mean, we weren't at the board meeting.
We had last week.
The final read, the final read won't be until.
Until the end of June. You have no more ideas than well yet?
There's not as many as you think there is, as some of those were procedures.
Yes.
Is this everything we want on that policy?
Yes.
In, in this, in these policies that are attached to the board packet are only the policies because I was like, I'm gonna take all the procedures out. And so if you look and click on that within online, that's what Ms. Hellebrand was saying, it's a lot smaller. I don't care however you like, are there changes you're proposing?
No, no, just general questions that I had as I read them and I guess, so I need to check to make sure they're on there.
And make sure their policies are not procedures.
Well, yeah, I see, for instance, Nigel said a question. It talked about alternative education for snow days. Are we kind of considering doing that type of procedure? I mean, was that the whole lore in there?
I, I did turn in the application.
Did you? Okay.
But to me, when you get a snow day here or there.
Right.
That's, that's tough, especially after what we just went through. And I envisioned something like that to be utilized for, throughout for two weeks, type of snow day. But that, that'll have to be communicated and I'm not sold on that idea, to be quite honest with you.
Well, I was curious, because I knew that Pius had done that, you know, this last winter. And then with all this virtual that we were doing, I was just curious if that was a legit plan for us in the future.
When I talk with some Pius people, they're kind of pretty far ahead of us on the whole electronic tiki today.
I turned in the application, just in case. Gives us the opportunity to look at it. Sure, and I don't envision that seeing that for next year, but maybe down the road someday. But after what we just went through, I figured that it just, get it in, get it approved.
And just, okay.
Right.
Then again, I see AP and I don't see it listed there, is that just a subcategory?
I see AP being administrative procedure, so that's not a.
So forget that. IGAP, IGAP, okay, that's there. Just a general question, this was addressing the information to parents when items have sexual contact? And I was just curious, like, do classes like baths, do they send that information out for permission from parents or just simply because they're enrolling in class?
They send the information out, I believe it's in our course catalog also, but yes, they do send the information out.
To get a written permission from parents or?
I don't know that we get written permission, no, but the information is out there.
Because I had never done that and I was just curious, should enroll in, in the classes, all of them. And AP is a procedure, right?
I, I will say, just frankly, I was clearly looking at it. I have my perennial complaint about the way the word is, like, these things are photocopying from the law sometimes. And no one reads the law except lawyers, they're just incomprehensibly worded.
See, I look at them and I read them and I can understand them.
Some of them, some of them, but some of them, not so much. And I'm sorry, when I was at the policy committee meeting, I'll keep bringing it up, but you know, when I'm looking at this policy that says for the elections of this district, well, if the district resides partly or wholly in St. Louis County, or if it is in partly or wholly, you know, things that clearly did not apply to our district were supposedly tailored to our district, you know? I'm supposing by the MSBA. I'm just, I, it is a perennial complaint, this might be, you know, my last year here, I don't know, but I'm adamant that we, I know there's always the next crisis on the hill, but this is something I just, I want to see some action on it, you know? It, it's a no-brainer to at least make it so that people who are under these rules know what the rules mean. You know, and aren't boiled up in legalese or extraneous or superfluous, you know, stuff. And I know there's a committee for that, but the committee is, has its own weight and it takes a lot of time, you know? Well, there needs to be a streamlined version of these things for people.
Well, like the, on the employee side, I have the employee handbook that I put together and to try to put like the layman's guide to.
Sure. But I mean, you know, when you're looking, even if I was curious about the district's policy on elections, you know, that wouldn't probably be a feature, that'd be common. If I'm looking at that, I'd be like, what, am I missing something? Why are they talking about St. Louis County, you know?
Well, I can say that the last policy that I was at, I wasn't excited about it, but I got myself looking into it. Honestly, the way you managed it and went through all the policies was very unexampled.
Do you think that there's a way, even if we're committed to, even if frequently asked questions and going through a what are?
Because most, if we could, I think for most people in the community, but I just, you know, why are we even using words like moral turpitude? That's straight from the law. I remember it from the law. When I looked it up, I was like, yeah, this is just photocopy, you know? I mean, why are we even using those words? And yeah, I mean, we could do the fact, that's great, but I just. I mean, I had to look that word up and I have a pretty good vocabulary, you know? And just, I.
A lot of times at work, whenever I have, let's say, a policy that I'm rolling out, I'll list it, but then underneath, what does this mean to you? And I'll lay it out in layman's terms of this is how it impacts you and this is what it directly means for you.
My, my only problem with those things is if the one is a perfect substitute for the other, then why don't we just use the other? You know, I mean.
And I don't know that it doesn't.
But if it's not a perfect substitute, then you're basically paraphrasing and you're, you know, I mean, the thing is, we don't need to use government language written by a legal aide who honestly doesn't really care if anybody understands what they're writing. It sometimes doesn't want people to understand what they're writing. Why are we copying their playbook? You know, I, it was a big deal for me just reading state laws too. I think it's ridiculous that we have all these laws out here that no one can comprehend or wants to read. So I'm putting that up there again and it will be a big sticking point for me when this comes up with finally.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah.
All right, any other issues on these consent items?
The DC trip proposed for next summer, is that in lieu of the trip being canceled this summer? That's what I'm assuming, so isn't that on a rotation of every other year?
I will ask.
I was gonna read our walk-ins, I thought I'd ask.
Um, it's, we don't always necessarily do it every other year, it just depends kind of on demand. Uh, then we skipped a couple of years because the man got to be like 20, 25, and then the man shot right back up. What we are gonna do is if you guys approve this, we are going to make it available to those people that were going to the trip this year first and give them the opportunity to sign up first and then we'll open it up to the other, the rest of the student body. So kind of, sort of, in lieu of.
Well, and I noticed that you were including junior high students as well and you hadn't done that in the past, had you?
We, no, we, we have.
Oh, have you? Okay.
Yes, we, it's fifth grade on up, it's sometimes because they're skipping years and stuff. Or people don't have money at this point, they may two years down the road, but their other kid wins. Uh, they're trying to figure out a way to do it, so we, we have, well, the last probably three trips opened up to junior high schools.
I wasn't aware of that.
So that increases your numbers too.
It does.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, so the motion then is to approve all the items on the consent agenda as presented. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay, we'll move down then to the superintendent report.
All right, a couple of things. Uh, the DNR, just an FYI, the DNR sent us a letter asking our response regarding remediation of the gas tank, the soil, uh, gas tank soil at the transportation department. I didn't know anything about it, it's a pre-existing, I guess, from the bus company, ABC Bus Company that had been there. We don't have to do anything with it, it would be our cost to do something with it. They are, they would like for us to do something with it, but they just want an update, what is your intentions? How responded our intentions or did I do anything at this time? It's just, I think it's seepage and.
Seepage from the tank.
Yeah, the ground, the dirt needs to be taken out and put back in, probably similar. My interpretations is similar, like the Casey situation, where there was seepage from the tank.
It must be old.
Yeah. This was news to us as we got it, it was, the reference was ABC Bus Service, I believe, or whatever the prior company was. So at this, I put the information in the attachments just so we have it for posterity's sake, but letting them know that we're not going to do anything unless. The CARES Act, we've submitted our application via DESI for those funds, um, we're being allocated, we have a number.
It's not final yet.
Yeah, we haven't.
It's not final. We got some edits back, but this, we're just gonna change some words. Sorry.
That's all right. So we're working on that collectively. To get that in there, our plan is, well, Kelly, where is it, how?
Our plan, and I, I called and I talked to the lady at DESI and asked her a whole bunch of questions, I'm sure she was pleased with me. We're gonna spend, kind of use it, we'll get some money upon completion of the application, within seven to 10 days, I think they said. We'll get the majority, 75% of our money. Since we haven't spent that yet on like Chromebooks or anything, we need to use it for something we have spent on. So we're gonna use it for salaries, whatever we get right now to kind of backfill the salaries on these things. And then once we have a more concrete plan with Chromebooks and we know when we're actually gonna pay for them because we do have to comply with cash management procedures with federal money and that means it's basically, once we spend it, then we can get reimbursed. So once we have a better plan on Chromebooks, we'll probably use that other 25% or whatever doesn't have to go towards non-publics to pay for Chromebooks. So we're gonna do a combination, salaries, Chromebooks.
Approximately how much money were we anticipating?
I think it's like 325,000-ish, which, yes, it's a lot of money, but it's not as much as they're making it sound like it is, I guess, really, so.
But that does help out when we talk about the reserves, if that goes in on salaries. When we talk, talk about that, or the negotiation thing, that's what is pushing that up.
Pushing up.
Because it's paid for 300,000 dollars on salaries.
I mean, that's a couple percent, even with what we'll get right away. And it's all about timing, like, will we get it before the year ends? Pardon?
I'm sorry, I hear what you're doing.
Oh, no, it's all about timing because they're kind of pushing that out right at the end of the fiscal year, so you don't have time to spend that money, so it pumps your reserves up.
So in absolute terms, what's the reserve at right now or what will it be?
I, I can't tell you exactly like right now, but I was thinking will be around 15%.
Oh, I, I meant in dollar amount, sorry, that's what I meant, roughly speaking.
Oh my gosh, I'm always.
Because you know, when we're talking 300,000, how do we relate that to what the reserve?
Oh, okay, gotcha, probably a percent and a half.
Okay.
As you know, as it drops.
So like, reserves are roughly maybe, you know, rehumiliated there.
Yeah, three and a half. Because that number for 1% fluctuates as that changes.
Also regarding the CARES Act is one of the things that we're asking about with the county, and they're trying to get us some information. The county has CARES money as well, but they can't get a straight answer on if a school district, if you've already received CARES funds, even though it's from DESI, are you eligible to receive county CARES fund? I would say we'd like, oh, hopefully, potentially, we could apply that to the SROs for next fiscal year, which would, our SROs are about 100,000 dollars. And you talk about some of the financial impact, reducing that, if we're able for one year to have the county, and that's being looked at, at the county level, for all of us school districts, so that would have an impact there. And then we'll also look at some reimbursement for daycare.
Yeah, I'm not sure how much that actually will be. As far as the FEMA money, we cannot spend that on technology. We know that, and as far as salaries, it's only overtime, so whatever overtime we may have. I know we shifted around a lot of our supplies, you know, to just use what we had at the daycare, so I'm not anticipating much in that regard.
That was one of those where it sounded really good until everybody in the United States is asking, you know, in this situation, it's different than a hurricane along the coast. Where it's, it's everyone's asking for it. Update on COVID, it's items and impacts, right now we've ended school. I haven't communicated with the parents yet as far as for next school year. I sent and wished our teachers well and I informed them, our plan is to come back. Our plan is to come back in the fall, and we're planning accordingly, as close to normal, you know? And I don't believe, I'm saying it publicly, full social distancing, it's not a reality in a school. So if it's a requirement, and I've made that note, is basically, if it's a requirement by the government of the state of Missouri, they're basically making that decision for us. It's not really local control at that point. It's just not economically feasible to put plastic around every student or to have multiple bus runs. I hope that come August, we're not in that situation. I believe that a lot of our community, or many in our community will send their kids back to school. There'll have to be some that don't send their kids back to school, that'll be their personal choice. But inform the teachers, our plan is to return. Now, we have to have plans A through D to tweak if that's not possible. So, but hopefully in the next few weeks, as soon as we figure out what questions they asked at this with the superintendents today. It's part of the uncertainty of what's going on, I don't know what specific questions to ask. And parents' perceptions may change as we go through this, because they've changed a lot in the last three weeks. Some of what's occurred in the state of Missouri, even down the Lake of the Ozarks, or these things, there's a trickle-down effect. If it doesn't blow up and more cases, people will become more comfortable. Or if it does, they'll have the exact counter effect. So some of that, I think, as we near July or late June, we'll draw a near as far as a true picture. But that's kind of where we're at with that and COVID right now.
So are you thinking you're gonna reach out to parents and ask, you know, how many are planning, like, July something, how many are planning to send their kids back? And that type of thing, or did I unders?
Yeah, I mean, that's, I don't know what to ask them. And that's a kind of a question as to the relevance. We want to have, include our stakeholders, but in asking that is, I told you, no, don't start it, still start it. You don't trust me or you don't believe in, or you said yes and then you couldn't even. Yeah, and you didn't do it. And similarly, you know, I was visiting with somebody at the pre-last night, I had thought, like, the technology, we sent that out, like, you have internet in the home. And the question was, really, that's not a good question because during the day, Drew Isaacson's at daycare. It's a better question, do they have internet or able to work on homework at we care or whatever versus, or at grandpa and grandma's versus at the home? So there's so many layers to that. It's finding the right questions and to get a read, I guess the key question is, what do we think, the general field? And I think a lot of that will come paying attention to social media, conversations, watch, you know, if they have the fair and it's full of people.
Courthouse is opening on Monday, so more, you know, we.
But I think when we come back in August, we also will be addressing, some won't be comfortable. We've already got a couple, they're pulling their kids to homeschool. Is, we have to put that plan in place to be able to provide that education they want virtually or pulling their kids up. But also have school open for those that do, but communicate with parents. That's gonna be a key piece of that is, your ki, a kindergarten's gonna walk up and hug your kindergarten. As we can't pursue each other, we can't, that's just gonna happen. And working with staff, does the employee, talk about the kids, we do have 500 employees. We're gonna have employees not want to return to work. How are we gonna address all of those particular issues? So, um, I don't know if I answered your question, I don't, some of that is I just, we talk about how to best gather the information, but when does that information that we gather actually have relevance? Because its relevance today is gonna be different than July 10.
And yet you have to have it sitting up so you can begin to work for it.
And it has budgetary impact.
Yes, yes.
You know, um, and that's the struggle even, you talk about a budget. The Federation of Esha said, we're not playing football. Then Ms. Genge is able to be like, all right, we're saving that much money on buses, referees and all of those type of things. I think my gut tells me, come fall, we will be, it'll be different, but it'll be pretty close to business as well. That's my hope and prayer and it's my gut, because I just feel like the economic impact of our kids in school, that's huge. That's huge for our parents, for those that they want to have that ability. And I, I feel like that'll come from Jefferson City and probably from the federal government as well, is we need, we are that resource for.
Well, I had, I had several people kind of tag me, uh, school in Montana had opened, reopened and school is normal. But then when I actually went and researched it and read it, it was like a school prepaid through 12 of 50, six of those. It's like, that does not protect us at all, not even when building blocks, come on. So, yeah, kind of unrealistic.
I also don't anticipate starting earlier, kind of what I would, is time is our friend at this point, I believe, rather than trying to squeeze that in. Along those lines, I'll preface technology with COVID is, it's on the agenda. The recommendation, there's gonna be no information in there, is to table it. Melissa Kelly, that's part of the report, you guys want to talk about your conversations? Erin, tell me.
Well, we got the, the bids back and they generated some more questions. So we reached out, or Erin reached out to the different vendors and this was late in the afternoon, 4:30. So we were unable to get those, those questions answered. So until we get them all answered, we'll bring that back on July 11th. I mean, June 11th, excuse me.
And Kelly will present, the budget will be preliminary budget?
It's gonna be super fluid this year, but yes, I will have preliminary numbers and they will change. Yes, it will change, but we'll keep you updated of all of our changes.
And lastly, we, congratulations to the Hillsborough R3 School Board for achieving the Missouri School Boards Association 2020 Governance Team Award. This recognition is based on the outstanding commitment to ongoing professional development, regional and statewide leadership, and active participation in legislative advocacy for public schools demonstrated by our school board and superintendent. School boards that receive this award demonstrate the battle. School boards that received this award demonstrate the value of ongoing learning for continuous improvement. There was 24 recipients of the award this year in the state of Missouri. In order to receive that, this district is accredited, all seven members of the school board obtained their essential C B M certification, uh, or were grandfathered from that requirement. At least two board members obtained advanced master board certification from MSBA. At least one board member obtained master board member certification. A former of the board, the superintendent, attended MSBA's annual conference, uh, last September. At least three board members, uh, and the superintendent discussed the spring regional meeting program. The district participated in the legislative forum, and a board representative participated in the 2019 delegate assembly. So congratulations to everyone on the board, and thank you for the second year in a row.
Back to back. Technology tortures.
Okay, all right. So we'll move into new business then. We'll start with, um, the school improvement plan issue. All right, so we need a motion to allow the current board approved C S I F to continue in totality until at such time the district has received full information regarding M C I F six items, and the multitude of issues related from COVID-19 are addressed. So thank you, John and Angie. I was kind of worried, anybody have any questions or concerns about it, something to discuss?
Just rolling over business as usual until they come up with it.
Yes. But M C I F starts.
Scheduled for 2000, February 21st, 2022, but they may push that back.
Okay, any other issues? So all in favor of approving the extension of the comprehensive school improvement plan? All right, very good. Then we move on to, um, the approval of the Lutheran Family and Children's Services memorandum. I need a motion to approve any, entering into a memorandum of understanding with the Lutheran Family and Children's Services for 21, for 2021. Let me get it up. Okay, so I heard Rob and I heard John, is that correct? So this is no change either, it's just the same as before. Any other, are you in discussion? All in favor of approving this M O U? Committee assignments, board committee, my computer is not cooperating here. So I need a motion to approve the Board of Education committee assignments for 2020 through 21.
Assignment.
Thank you, Renee, and then I heard John, I believe. Anybody have any issues with the assignments, or things that they signed up for? Everybody good? Okay, all in favor of approving these committee assignments? All right, motion carries.
I'm gonna table the Chromebook.
Thank you.
Second.
So the motion to approve, um, no, the motion to table the Chromebook response. Okay, so we have John, and we have Beth, so would you give her the motion? All in favor of approving to table this concept? Okay, perfect.
And I nominate Betsy.
Okay, so, give me a minute here.
I thought we did that last time, apparently we didn't.
Yeah, I thought we did too.
Whole nother one reorganized. But John and I discussed that from now on, that should be listed in the organization when we reorganize the board itself. So, um, I need a nomination then for Betsy.
Lucky you.
Any other nominations? Well, I might need a second, I guess, I have, I have Beth, do I have a second?
Yeah, you second.
Okay, sorry, I did not hear that. So all in favor of approving Betsy as our.
By confirmation.
Okay, got you. There we go, seven of them. Welcome back.
Welcome back.
I'm gonna do it there.
Oh my God.
We got this down.
Okay. So, motion, Eric, which, you seconded, okay, John, to adjourn the meeting. John, okay. And a show of hands to adjourn. Very good.